Good evening, this meeting will come to order. This is a regular conference of the city councils incorporated the annual meetings, notice 2014, which was filed in the city clerk's office. Posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2013, sent to the Star Ledger Home News Tribune in all compliance with the provisions of the old public meetings of New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gerste. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres. Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman King.
Here.
Councilman Sedaney.
Here.
Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Present.
Present. Here. Seven members present.
Anyone from the public wishing to address city council? Please step forward. Yes, sir.
I don't see Councilman Montero here. Are there any Portuguese in this room?
That's it? Thank you, sir.
Wait, just checking on that crossing guard.
Um, the tourist is not here.
Okay.
Could you send a letter to Director Pausgrove? I requested a study be done. Actually, this is your word, Councilman Sedaney. Corner of Orchard, McGee, and Westfield Avenue.
Um, actually, that's...
It's right on the border.
Yeah, it's near the border.
Yeah, we talked about this like two years ago.
They haven't got back to you guys, right? With the crossing guard study?
We've been dealing with it for two years on this thing now.
They haven't got back to you?
It's serious now.
Okay, can we follow up, please?
Mm-hmm.
Any else?
Yes.
Any other member of the public wishing to address city council? Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Sam McGee from joint meeting, Madam Clerk and gentleman...
We're gonna get you in a second, sir.
Okay, why don't you introduce folks?
We'll get to you in a second.
Okay, good.
We gotta first go through the public. You're here to do a presentation. We invited you to be here.
I thought it was part of the public.
Oh, you're not the City of Elizabeth resident or taxpayer, so technically, you're not. All right, um, we're gonna now, we're gonna now move on to, what's that? Close it off with a public session.
Anybody else?
See anybody else wishing to address us on city council? See none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. All right, now, Mr. McGee, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Just like introduce, oh, good evening, again, good evening. Introduce folks from joint meetings here. Director Administration Finance.
Hi, Anthony Teresa. Your name, please.
Our, one of our advisors who keeps me together, former superintendent Joe Bonacorso.
David Javel.
To his left, another one of my advisors, and the former my assistant, but now he's a person who comes and keeps me, keeps me together every day, Ms. Ralph Lemondola.
Nice to meet you.
CME. Individual who's, who's here this evening. Current superintendent.
Steve Dowell.
He's been away for so long. Steve Dowell here. Thank you.
So who's in charge of the joint meeting?
We all are, but I sign the checks.
So you're the chairman of the board?
I'm the executive director.
Who's the gentleman that preceded you, Mr. McGee?
Pardon?
Gentleman preceded you.
Anthony Teresa.
Brian Chrisius.
Oh, Brian Chrisius. Brian Chrisius.
Brian Chrisius, who was the director up until what year?
Good evening, everybody.
Ten years ago.
Okay. You've been there ever since?
Yes.
Okay. Recognize the president of the council?
Ten years ago. Nice to meet you.
All right, Mr. McGee, I guess you have a presentation for us?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bonacorso is gonna handle the presentation.
Thank you for your time this evening. As you already are aware, the joint meeting is comprised of 11 owner municipalities and several customer municipalities. The largest of the customers is the City of Elizabeth. The area, the tributary area of the joint meeting includes way up here in West Orange, in the northwest, to New Providence, and the south, and the southwest of that, all the way down the Broadway River Valley to the City of Elizabeth, where our facility is located right here. That's an aerial shot of the joint meeting. As it appears, we have here the Turnpike, here's the Gopples Bridge access, here's the Elizabeth River, and here is the Arthur Kill. These are our digestors and some of our biological facilities. What you really cannot see is across the street, one of our other, two of our other buildings for solid sanding. Here's another view of the, of the facility, and here you can see part of our solid handling facility. There's the Gopples Bridge, and there's the chemical post type of rail. This is a relatively old aerial because it does not include the cogeneration facility which exists here. And one of the reasons why we can't have an updated aerial is because we are so close to Newark Airport, the Homeland Security is not allowing helicopters to come by and take those pictures, so we kinda have to make do with what we have. Over the years, the cost, the cost of management strategies has been incorporated into our capital improvement plan. And what we do is we look at how the facility is operated, what are the conditions that we are, are experiencing with respect to the age of the infrastructure and the equipment and the regulatory agencies that impose requirements upon the joint meeting. Some of the things that we look at in order to contain the costs is purchasing of power from third parties, and we do this routinely now, whereas our cost to purchase electricity is about 10 cents per kilowatt hour. At home, you probably pay around 17 cents per kilowatt hour, and here in the city, you may be paying 12 or 13 cents an hour, a kilowatt hour. We have looked at containing and controlling our largest consumer of electricity, which are aerators, and those are devices which impart oxygen to the biological activity in the process. And we use 32 very high horsepower motors, which consume about two-thirds of all of the power that we use from any source. Years ago, when the facility was built and upgraded in the 70s, we installed pumps in order to elevate the water so that it could continue through the process by gravity. But that cost a lot of money, and the technology that was available in the 70s is nowhere near what the technology is now. We replaced those, and I'll get into that a little further. Gravity belt thickeners, which changed the system that used hundreds of horsepower, and we reduced that horsepower to about three or four. Significant savings. Fuel switching. On a daily basis, we look to see what is natural gas being, what is natural gas costing, and what is fuel oil costing? And because our facility is built so that we can alternate fuels, we will change over whatever we can in order to utilize the cheapest available fuel per BTU. And finally, our gem, our jewel, our newest addition is our cogeneration facility. The budget in 2009 for the joint meeting was $24 million seven. Of that, 10%, 10.6%, or 2.6 million was for energy, oil, gas, and electricity. Here we go, five years later, the budget is 30%, $30 million, which means that on an average, it went up just under 4% per year in that time period. However, all energy use is 6.6% of the budget, or $1.9 million. If we look here, it was 2.6 million down to 1.9 million. This hazy thing is also pictured over here, and you have a copy of it. Along the left-hand margin, the capital plan shows the projects that were completed since Couple of things happened in 1996. The joint meeting board had accumulated about $20 million for rehabilitation of facilities according to the requirements of the federal government, who granted the joint meeting $75 million to improve and build the facility back in the 70s. One of the requirements was that a certain amount of funds were set aside in order to upgrade, maintain, and rehabilitate that equipment. In 1996, the joint meeting board had $20 million and elected to distribute or disperse half of that to the member municipalities, the owners, and the City of Elizabeth. The City of Elizabeth received the check for $3.7 million.
What, what year was it?
1996.
Well, I don't know.
In exchange for that activity, the joint meeting and, and the representatives agreed to begin a capital improvement plan so that we could stretch out, and this one goes for 10 years, and, and it just continues. At the end of the 10 years, we start moving around projects pending regulatory changes or permit issues, or where we see equipment or facilities nearing their useful life, or where we can see significant savings in the operation of the facility. So what you have in front of you is what the plan looks like going out to, what year is that now?
2024.
2023.
2023, so another nine years. However, every three years, the staff of the joint meeting reviews this plan to see what projects need to be accelerated and which have to move back, again, because of the conditions that exist at the time of the evaluation and regulatory or permit changes from the EPA and the DEP.
Hold on, before you...
Yes, go ahead.
I've got some questions on this. At the bottom, you show the percentage next to towns.
That's correct.
And you show Elizabeth being responsible for almost 35%.
That's correct.
Why is that 35% above the 100% that every other town is paying? If you add up all the other towns, they add up to 100%, and then you add on top of that another 35%, which is our responsibility.
Well, one portion, Ralph, you wanna explain that?
I'm just trying to understand why, why if the project is 100%, 100% is 100%, it's not 135%.
No, it's not, you're right, it's not. But there are portions of ownership that the 11 municipalities are in charge of, or according to the flow. The flow of, of the City of Elizabeth is calculated separately. So let's take for example that we have 100 million gallons of flow, and the City of Elizabeth, excuse me, accounts for 35 million gallons. So that means the City of Elizabeth, we take that and we subtract it directly off the 100, the City of Elizabeth is responsible for 35% of the costs and the, and the allocations.
Okay, so then...
The remainder is 70%. Now, among that 70, the owners, the 70%, is whacked up according to certain percentages that they own in, under the contract, which adds up to 100%.
See, that, that's where the problem lies.
Okay.
Because if you are going to put out a project...
Right.
And it's going to cost $100 million...
Correct.
Our responsibility should not be more than 35%.
It's $35 million, and, and the rest of, the rest of the towns is $65 million. Then that 65 million...
But you see, if you add up the percentage, if the total cost, if you look at the bottom of first payment there, which says 15 million...
Right.
Okay, and you multiply that out by 4.35% of East Orange, their responsibility is much more than 4.28. I got a calculator right here if you wanna use it.
I'm working it out, too.
It doesn't add up, sir. So we're getting punished?
No, no.
Oh, we are?
Punished.
Yeah, we are.
No.
If you add, do the math. I'm telling you to do the math. I, I've been doing it while you were talking.
The total allocation is $15 million.
Okay, so 15 million, .138... Times 4.35% equals...
No, they're here for...
658,000, not 428.
It's 15 million minus the 5,297...
So it's not a true 4%?
Yes, it is. It's, it's okay. Let's go through this again.
4% ownership.
The 11 municipalities, the, the, the contract that the joint meeting has with the City of Elizabeth says that, and this was negotiated after a court exchange in the 80s, the contract says that the way the calculation is given is that you measure the flow from the City of Elizabeth.
Is that how you do the other guys, too?
No.
No.
No, because that contract is a different contract.
So let me ask you a question. You showed before a bunch of lists of towns...
Yes.
Members and customers.
Yes.
Other than the City of Elizabeth, are there any other customers that are not members?
Yes, but they, but they come through other towns, and those towns charge them. We charge that town. For example, New Providence is a customer, but they are not a member. But since the City of Summit sold a portion of their rights to New Providence, the City of Summit charges New Providence for the flows that go through them.
So Summit benefits from New Providence because the percentage is less now?
No, the percentage is not less. The City of Summit has allocated a certain percentage based upon, let, let me start from the beginning, okay? Let's say we have 100 million gallons. The city has a flow meter at the Trenton Avenue Pump Station that records how much flow. And let's say over the period of a year, it comes out to 35 million gallons per day average, whatever, 35...
And none of that flow is coming from other towns through Elizabeth?
No.
You sure?
Yes.
How's that possible?
It's possible because...
Westfield Avenue, the flow is coming from Roseville Park.
You may have a couple of minor connections.
Okay, so why aren't we getting any benefit for that?
That's because of the contracts that have existed. Now, what you're saying here is there are two, two trunk lines that come down from, and they shape like a Y, all the way down this river valley.
And they come through Elizabeth?
They come through Elizabeth. The City of Elizabeth connects to that right here. Right up, as a matter of fact, it's 1,100 feet away from the plant.
Uh-huh.
Okay, it does not go, these towns do not go through Elizabeth.
The pipes go under our streets, don't they?
Yes, they do.
And if they collapse, who has to fix them?
We do.
Okay.
And we have.
Okay.
Multiple occasions.
Okay.
All right, so let's go back to...
I just wanna get back to the relationship, Mr. President.
Yes.
Madam, Madam Counsel.
Thank you. With New Providence and Summit, because I'm hearing that you said that Summit sold a portion of their ownership to New Providence?
Not the ownership, no. The rights of capacity, not the ownership. There are only 11 voting members who are owners. Any city, any of the owners...
Which other cities beside New Providence is not an owner and is a customer?
Yeah, a very small portion of Orange, Livingston, a couple, is, I think there's a funeral home in Cedar Row.
So this is like just more...
Yeah, very small portions, yes.
They're not large, like...
Well, New Providence is a large contributor insofar as it's about a million gallons. Okay? But the City of Summit has a capacity of about 8 million gallons that they own. So they took and they allowed the City of Summit an opportunity to close down their sewage treatment plant and put that...
You mean New Providence?
New Providence. Then, and put that flow through Summit, and Summit charges them for that. So when Summit gets its bill from the joint meeting, obviously, it uses some of those funds to, to take and pay that off.
Mr., can I just ask, Mr. Garrett, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This capital improvement chart that we see in front of us, a lot of these projects are on the site of joint meetings, got that?
Sure, sure.
Is that site in the City of Elizabeth?
It's in the City of Elizabeth, yes.
What's their tax rate, or what's their assessment?
They're not taxed.
Ah, beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
And why are they not taxed, Tony?
Taxed into entity.
It's a municipal entity.
So even though their assessed value with all these improvements keep going up, City of Elizabeth gets no dime for it.
No.
Okay. But yeah, we have to pay 34% above everybody else.
You're not paying 34% above everybody?
Yes, we are.
No, you're not.
Because 100% is being divided by the other guys.
You're not listening to the math. 100 million gallons...
I went to, I went to grammar school, and I went to a Catholic grammar school.
So did I.
The nuns are pretty good.
I know.
Two and two equals four, that's 100%. You're telling me there's 100% out there?
It may be a poor representation of how the calculation is done, and that's why I'm trying to illustrate it to you. If you have 100 million gallons and the flow that's measured, because the contract with the City of Elizabeth states that you must be charged by the flow, not the way the rest of the towns are charged. Now, let me explain how that's done. The rest of the towns are charged based upon what's called equivalent dwelling units. Every town says how many houses, and I'm gonna use it loosely because there are also commercial facilities, and there's a calculation for that. So let's say that there are 1,000 houses, and each house contributes 10 gallons. So that's 10,000 gallons that have to be allocated to those 1,000 houses. Of those 1,000 houses, let's say that the City of Newark has 100 of those houses. So the City of Newark would be paying 10% of those 100 houses, and that's where the percentages kinda deviate. So the owners are allocated numbers of flows based upon the percentage of equivalent dwelling units that they have in their service area. The City of Elizabeth argued back then that that was unfair to them. They wanted a flow measurement. So in order to do that calculation, you total all your expenses, figure out the total flow, in this case, the example I'm using, it's 1,000 gallons. Of that, 35% of the flow was the City of Elizabeth's. So therefore...
So the other 65% should be divided amongst the towns.
Exactly. That 65% now is 100% of the owner's nut that they have to cut.
When was the last time that this meter was checked by all these towns? Flow meter.
Whose meter?
Flow meter, this 35%. When was this last time it was...
That is the responsibility of the City of Elizabeth, and they do it every three months.
And we're still at 35%?
And they have to certify to it.
And we're still at 35%?
Roughly. It changes depending upon the rain.
Mr. President, yeah. One point that I think, it's like we have apples with oranges. Like, for example, the City of Newark, which is the largest city in the state of New Jer, New Jersey, is only paying 1 million...
Okay.
While the City of Elizabeth, who's the fourth largest city, is paying 34%, which is 5 million.
Okay, let me show you.
Now, so if I'm just comparing apples and oranges...
No, no, actually...
I'm just using my, my, my lay, my public education common sense. I didn't go to Catholic school. I didn't go to none of it.
But the adding is math is still math.
But math is still math. That's what I was taught by most of my, my professors and teachers wherever I went. Math is just math. It's either figures lie or liars figures. So what I'm trying to say is that they're using two different calculations...
No.
...to come up with...
That's inaccurate.
Come up with the cost.
Let me show you why it's inaccurate.
Because you're using for the City of Elizabeth...
You're using flow meter for the city...
And then when I let you do about households, 10%, so those are two separate...
So is there a flow meter in every town?
Can I explain to...
Can you answer that question first?
There are many, there are 37 other flow meters.
But are their percentages based on flow meters?
No.
Now, if you look here... That's what the Capitol wants to refer to.
Well, here, this is what I'm referring to.
To me, that's why I have the issue.
Here is the City of Newark.
Right there.
Here is the City of Newark. It starts here and goes all the way here and here. You see that? This is all the City of Newark.
Right.
See this portion right here?
Mm-hmm.
That's the portion of the City of Newark in here. That's the portion of the City of Newark that comes to the joint meeting. The rest of this goes to Passaic Valley. So that's why the apparent disparity in the numbers, 100% or all of Newark is not coming to the joint meeting. As a matter of fact, it's only about 4% or 5% of the total joint meeting flows. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Two things. Are you a governmental unit or are you a nonprofit? The joint meeting is a governmental unit.
We understand what that is.
It's a consortium of 11 municipalities in joint meeting, established by a law that was passed in 1902, 1920, something like that.
The law's changed because of the condition of the time. If you can change the Constitution of the United States, you can surely change what's governed this joint meeting.
That's certainly true.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just a history person for American history, and common sense would tell me that.
That's, that's certainly true.
You know, so that can be, so let's not hinge our light on that.
Oh, no question.
Mr. President, can you...
Not at all.
And Counsel.
My point is, a, a payment in lieu of taxes, are governmental units open for being taxed, not taxed, but mandated with the payment in lieu of taxes instead of property taxes? Is that a possibility or not?
I don't know. Tony, you're an expert.
No, no, they're non, they're an ex, governmental unit. There is no, what you're talking about is a pilot, a tax evasion. And that's, that's the same...
Let's use a different term. If, if a governmental unit, like a county, wanted to utilize property in the City of Elizabeth, there would, there would not be property taxes. Could they be assessed fee for the use of their property?
We don't have authority as a city council to impose tax or payment in lieu or anything else against their, for their, for their use of our land? No.
Mr. President?
No, it's been attempted before, I think, years ago.
Can we find that out? Mr. Attorney?
Um, I mean, we've looked into it, and, I mean, the only thing that we think you can do is, is by agreement, and we already have an agreement.
But agreement doesn't favor our city or our residents. Mr. President?
Okay, Counsel.
Thank you. I don't know, maybe something that we can look into, just like the Galiford Hill Golf Course, that is a county entity, but I believe it pays taxes to the township of Kenilworth.
How's that possible?
Because I remember reading that in the paper they went to...
Yeah, that was my understanding.
And that is a county.
The county golf course pays taxes to the municipality, and you said that...
When they upgraded, when they upgraded the...
Because they did an improvement on the property.
Yes.
Well, we're continuing to do improvements on the...
That's my question.
The, the issue here is that the City of Elizabeth is utilizing its protective services, its fire services, perhaps other ancillary municipal services that in effect benefit the 11 members and, and not us.
Right, if that facility catches fire, I don't see Summit coming down here to put it out. That's for sure.
But, but one thing that has been helpful tonight, Mr. President, is that this is not a profit-making entity. This is strictly all based on flow, and the true flow for the City of Elizabeth is 35%. Is measured, and it can vary from one year to the next depending upon precipitation that comes through the city. So, so in essence, there's no financial benefit or distinction between being a customer and a member, or is it... No, there is not. Primarily because the joint meeting operates on a zero-based budget.
Right.
At the end of the year, whatever remains is reallocated back to the towns that contributed and according to the same percentage that they, that they put the money into the pot. So if, if the City of Elizabeth paid 35% of the total budget, at the end, if there's a million dollars left, the City of Elizabeth gets $350 million. A thousand, so...
So let, can, just one, I mean, you're here to make a presentation, I apologize for interrupting you, but this new project that we're facing, having to pay 10, about 22 million dollars, I guess, over the period of the next several years?
It's not a single project, it's multiple projects.
Okay. How, how is this gonna benefit the City of Elizabeth?
Okay, what I wanted to do is give you an example here. We have these 32 aerators at 100 horsepower each, and what we're going to do is replace them with more efficiency and process control so that we don't use that kind of horsepower. Characteristically, these motors run at one speed, and so by making them more efficient and by making them variable speed, we can have those motors pace what their actual need is, so they wouldn't be using 100 horsepower all the time. I'm reluctant to say 100% of the time because I didn't want to go down that path. Our original pumps that we had at the joint meeting were 350 horsepower pumps that were Our original pumps that we had at the joint meeting were 350 horsepower pumps that were installed in 1978. And those 350 horsepower would pump out 64 million gallons each. Back in 1998, we upgraded them so that that same horsepower could pump 75 million gallons. So it's more efficient. Further, in 2007, we did the same with another couple of pumps and wound up with the same efficiencies that were driving that project. The variable frequency drives allow us to do a couple of things. First of all, it reduced the horsepower. Secondly, what it did was it removed the need to have an operator, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, monitoring those pumps. So when these were installed, that would be five operators. They were not laid off. They were assigned other duties, and then as retirements occurred, those five slots were not replaced. The use of the power for those main sewage pumps before we upgraded them, as you can see, the use was going up, and the reason why it goes up is because of precipitation and because of growth of the service area. But after we installed the upgrades, you see that the rate of power consumption declines. The main sewage pumps alone allocated $126,000 per year in savings. That does not include the labor savings. Gravity belt thickeners were driven by 150 horsepower motors, or two of them, at a cost of about $567 per day. We replaced them with gravity belt thickeners that utilize about 3 horsepower. Again, the technology changed and was became available, and then we incorporated that into the capital project to pull those two high horsepower motors out and put in a different process, and now costs us about $11 a day to operate. Also, because of the high speeds of that equipment, we had to have an operator stationed there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's five operators. Another five that we didn't need anymore since now an operator can just walk by here every three or four hours to make sure the water's not spilling on the floor. Those five operators were not fired, but we did establish a program whereby, as they retired, we replaced them with apprentices, which is- which would be a labor charge at about 50% of what the operator cost was. And that allowed these people to learn the trade, learn the operations. So as openings came available, they could walk right in and immediately their salary went up to operating level. And we've been working that successfully for about seven years. The cogeneration facility is our jewel. Anaerobic digesters produce as a byproduct methane gas. It's a flammable gas, can be used as a fuel. We upgraded the digesters to be able to produce more gas. When you produce gas, you're destroying solids. So it's less solids that have to be taken out of the facility and treated or handled or applied to the land as fertilizer. So we improved the efficiency of these digesters to make more gas, which means less solids are going out. But all that gas was being burned, wasted. We installed in the 80s three cogeneration engines at 325 kilowatt-hours capacity each. But as the air permits regulations changed, it would have cost us well over a million gallons, a million per engine to install the air pollution control devices. So what we said was, let's do a couple of things. The DEP was after the joint meeting to install a standby generator, which would have cost us about $14 million, and only be used when there was an emergency. It would sit there until it was needed. And you know how reliable those things are. That's number one. Number two, we had excess gas. And number three, power was gradually increasing, the cost of power. So by establishing this project, we built a facility that could use the increased methane gas that we were producing, which was also destroying the solids. We could power the facility, and we put in enough engines to power the facility at about 87% of its capacity. And we saved money on power. And this is what happened. Two years ago, next month, Superstorm Sandy made a left-hand turn, knocked out every wastewater treatment plant on the east coast of New Jersey. The Passaic Valley was out of business. It's still not totally in business. The joint meeting kept on operating, did not spill a drop. We were flooded to a degree, but the entire facility remained online, powered by the cogeneration facility. There's our motor control center, it's computer-operated, so that an operator doesn't have to spend 24 hours a day there. He goes in, checks on it, make sure everything's running fine, and then he goes on. Here's the engines. We have four of them, each 800 KW. So that when all four are online, we could literally power 96% of our demand. Bottom line, we produced $1.8 million worth of power last year in that facility. And that was on digester gas. Sometimes, like when we have the four, we don't have enough digester gas right now to power all four of the engines. So in order to power the fourth one, frequently we have to use natural gas. Still, with that calculation, we're saving a ton of money in power by doing that. Another one of the projects is the sealed water filtration system. And what we normally used city water for at the joint meeting was to dissolve chemicals like polymers for sealed water, which is needed by the pumps and devices to prevent gases and debris from entering the equipment and for cooling water. Here's our water usage, whoops. Here's our water usage up through 2009. In 2009, our filtration system came online, and there's our water usage now. As of last year, we saved $222,000 in water bills alone. The joint meeting was established in 1898, and at that time, since everything was gravity, no pumps, the power demand was zero, glory days. However, as the plant started to grow, primary treatment, which was just gravity sedimentation, the kilowatt-hours grew. When it became a secondary treatment biological facility, it went up to 3,700. Then we put on those three small engines to trim down to 2,800. Then the thickener centrifuges brought it back up again. When we got rid of the thickener centrifuges and changed the sewage pump drives and the gravity belt thickeners, now we add up, we add the cogeneration facility. So instead of pulling out and paying them for 3,700 kilowatt-hours, we're paying for 550. Plan capital projects which are going ahead from this point on this plan are improvements to the airation facility. As I indicated, the motors will be changed out and the controls will be altered to be able to follow the process a lot closer. Site-specific electric metering so that we can pick out which facilities need more attention to become more efficient. Continuing digester maintenance. In order to continue to destroy the solids and produce methane, more methane, the digesters have to be taken out of service. Work can be done, cleaned, and then restored to service. Once they're all up to 100% snuff, we may be looking at potentially adding two more engines, and then we start exporting power so that we're not only powering our entire facility, but we are selling the power back into the grid, and which ultimately reduces the cost of operating the facility. Stormwater system isolation, this is important because it was stormwater that almost wiped us out with Superstorm Sandy. And we are facing a major permit issuance by the DEP, strong-armed by the EPA, to be able to maximize all of the flow that comes to the plant and reduce the CSOs. Now, the city of Elizabeth is probably familiar with this. The CSO permit will be coming out mid-2015, I'm told. We were supposed to see it in- I'm sorry. We were supposed to see it in December, but they're pushing it off. We have multiple meetings, we're fighting, actively fighting some of the requirements of this. Your staff is also working with us on that. They are cooperating and providing information to the DEP, arguing some of their standings in some of the issues. So this will have a major, major, major impact for the next 20 years. We don't know how far they're going to push it. SCADA, which stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. That enables the processes and the equipment to be monitored remotely and controlled remotely and by algorithms that computers have put out so that we reduce the amount of manual and physical presence needed to operate the facility and also to fine-tune the efficiencies. And lastly, flood protection and mitigation. We are being mandated to protect and harden the joint meeting by the regulatory agencies because they don't want to see happen to the joint meeting, or any other facilities for that matter, what happened to Bay Shore, Passaic Valley, Bergen County Utilities, Edgewater. The list goes on. It didn't happen to the joint meeting, but it could have.
On that point, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
One of the biggest problems that I see when we get these big storms, Elizabeth still has these combined sewer lines.
Yes.
So this 35% flow, a lot of it is rainwater.
Yes, it is.
It's not just sewer coming out, it's torrent. And it happened more than once over the last couple of years that when you're getting killed at joint meeting with rainwater from our combined sewers, you close the gates on us.
Oh, no. There is no such gate. We went through this once before. You may not have been on the council at that time.
I've been on for 22 years.
And then you may have been here that night that I came here and answered that question. There is no gate to close for the city of Elizabeth. Once again, the city of Elizabeth has one connection, it's a very big one. It's a 60-inch line that connects to our pipe 1,100 feet away from the beginning of the plant. It does not have a valve.
I'm not saying that it does, but your facility just doesn't have enough power to-
Ah, that's a little different.
Well, the flow can't go through if you can't handle it.
Let's step back to what I just said about-
So my question is, this last item over there?
Yes.
Is that going to cure that problem?
No.
So what capital improvement do you need to do at your facility to alleviate that problem which affects the city of Elizabeth directly?
The plant would have to get bigger.
Okay.
A lot bigger. And that, if you remember, I just mentioned about the CSO permit issue. That permit will dictate whether or not the city of Elizabeth separates its sewers or does a combination of separating sewers and directing flow to a larger treatment plant. And that's a 20-year plan.
I have another question. You talked about all this reduction in staff. I'd like to know, and I guess it's public information.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to know, what is the total salaries and benefits that you pay to all of your employees, members, you guys, everybody in that facility? I'd like to know what that total number is.
Well-
On a yearly basis.
If we go back to the very beginning, I broke out the budget. Salaries and benefits is 11, oh, that's 2009, is $14.1 million.
Who is making $14.1 million?
The government's on half of it.
There are, I think, 135 employees. Is that right? 137 employees.
So they're all making $100,000?
That's all salaries, all benefits, all pension, all hospitalization. All those expenses are there. They're all inclusive in there.
Is there a way that we could get a breakdown of that number?
Certainly. If you could just, before we leave, just tell me-
We'll have a letter sent over.
Fine. Address it to Mr. McGee, and then we can certainly put together-
I'd like to know who's making all $14 million.
Okay.
The total is $14 million, so there's got to be a list of who's making what, right?
I suspect that there is.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question.
You can't talk.
I can ask.
Counselor? Mr. President, in reviewing these capital projects here, they all appear to be located at the facility itself.
Yes, that's correct.
So in a sense, that's equitable, that the one customer and the members are proportionately paying for the capital improvements.
That's correct.
What happens when there are capital improvements that need to be made in the township of any of the members?
Okay.
How much of this money is being spent in other towns?
Literally none. It's all being spent at the facility. The individual towns, the only thing that goes through individual towns is our trunk line. We do not own the laterals or the sewers in any of the towns. It's only the main. And when that needs improvement or repair, that comes out of a fund that is only funded by percentage by the towns that are directly impacted by that pipe. So for an example, if there is a problem in Summit or Milburn, the city of Newark, the city of East Arms, the city of Irvington, don't pay a penny. It's all allocated to them. And there are seven sections, segments, that are allocated that way by percentage so that the only people that pay for it are the ones that are directly impacted by it. Okay? And that too is by contract.
One last thing.
Yes.
You're doing a great job on finding a means of savings in profit centers. What about solar? Have you ever- have you looked into solar at all?
At this point, solar is not cost-effective.
Not cost-effective.
And we don't have enough property to be able to make it cost-effective. Right now, our most cost-effective methodology is generating electricity by using the gas that we would have wasted. The cost of the project, of that project that I mentioned, was $16 million. And in a 20-year period, we're allocating or projecting that there will be a savings of about $36 million in that same 20-year period.
So are we going to get our money back?
You'll get as much money back by percentage as you put in.
Tony, go ahead.
The joint meeting charges the city approximately $10 million a year right now. Those cost savings on an annual basis, do you have any idea how much would be reduced? You mentioned a significant number over the next 20 years. On an annual basis, that $10 million, that $10 million would go down to what, if they stay stable?
Well, I don't know if it'll go down, but what it does, it offsets, it increases in other areas. As you saw, even though the budget went up, the cost of power went down significantly.
So we're talking about stabilizing that $10 million over the next 10 years?
I don't know if you can project that because for a number of years, none of us paid into the pension. None of the organizations paid into the pension. And all of a sudden, you got to rush to make that up. If that hadn't happened, the quantity of money that would have been paid out in benefits portion would have been reduced. So there are other situations that have the impact on the budget. What I'd like to point out is this, is this item here? This is a survey that the joint meeting did not put together. This is a survey that was put together by the Association of Environmental Authorities. And what they do is they calculate the cost of treatment per million gallons. And as you can see there, Atlantic County, it's $2,000 per million gallons. The Bay Shore Regional Sewage Authority, which was wiped out by Sandy down in Omaha Beach, is $3,600 per million. If you go down to where I've highlighted the joint meeting, it's $1,100 per million gallons.
And just so that I get this clear, that's the number based on the 100% or 135%? I'd like to know. How much is the city paying per million gallons? Is it 1.1% or is that an average taken of all the towns?
That is, that is what the joint meeting spends to treat a million gallons.
How much does it cost the city of Elizabeth? Can you get to that calculation?
It costs about the same. It costs the city of Elizabeth $1,100 per million gallons. It costs the city of Newark $1,100 per million gallons.
It just seems to me that we're paying more.
Sorry.
Based on the calculation?
I may have, I have, I have admitted that it may be a poor illustration of how the percentage is calculated, but it's a percentage that was tested by court, tested by-
It was approved by the court, not tested. They approved it.
Well, it was a settlement, so therefore it was agreed to by the city and by the joint meeting. And I'm not here to defend that. I'm just trying to explain it.
No, I understand, but we're not happy with it.
I understand that thoroughly. That's very evident.
We are obviously paying way more than any other town who are members of the joint meeting.
You are, yes, you are putting more dollars into the pot.
And we're getting, and we're the ones that host the facility in our town. We don't get a dime.
I understand.
Everybody's waste comes through Elizabeth because that's where the pipes are.
Yes.
They're not magically going through the sky. And we're getting no direct benefit other than a general benefit that everybody's getting.
I understand your frustration, however, those are issues that you have to take up directly with the board.
And I understand that. And maybe that's something that we may have to look at again because we haven't done it in a few times, in a few years. But I'd like to, Tony, I know you raised the issue that that's how much we're paying, 10 million roughly?
Well, that's the operating expense. The capital program, that we have to pay $4 million separate, but that comes into the area of a rate increase to our sewer customers. We're talking about- We're talking about twenty-four million dollars over the next ten-year period. Our rates are going to be going up maybe ten, fifteen percent just attributed to the capital projects for the joint meeting. Even though the operating expense, ten million dollars, is stable, let's say, the capital expense is going through debt service. You have to go out and bond it.
Right.
We're paying principal, we're paying interest, and that's going up. But I think you raise a good point about the, it's non-taxable. Okay, we can't tax them, but a host fee, I think would be...
I think that's something we should really...
Really, but it has to go through the legislative process. You have to go to senators and...
And that's maybe what we need to do.
That's, I mean, it...
Absolutely. Because we're not getting, we're not getting the share that we should get.
You get an excellent point because...
We're paying more than everybody else.
You're talking about fire services, you're talking about public works, the streets, police, and that type of thing. And it's all an expense that we would be covering at the joint meeting. So the host fee would be, to me, the only way that we...
Can you give, can you give for us, maybe between yourself and these gentlemen, over the last ten years, what has been our payment to joint meeting?
Yeah, it's approximately ten million dollars.
And how much has been, how many thousands of gallons, I'm sorry, millions of gallons have we given? Have we pushed through joint meeting exactly those same years? So that I'd like to see if in fact we're only paying eleven hundred per million.
This is, this is not, this is two years old, but we can certainly work that out.
Thank you.
As another topic of interest or subject.
Or is it different math? It might be a different math. I don't know.
I studied math for a long...
No, it might be a different math.
Not new math. The joint meeting average cost per household is about a hundred and two dollars per year. That includes an estimate for what is debt service. As opposed to Ocean County, the Ocean County Utilities Authority, which charges fifteen hundred dollars per household a year.
Right, but that's current, but with the capital...
You might pay more to the city of Elizabeth, but to the joint meeting, a householder pays about a hundred and two dollars.
Tony, what does Elizabeth charge? What does Elizabeth charge?
Because based on our water flow.
Yeah, I'd say the average cost of a four-family home...
About six hundred a year.
Yeah, about six hundred a year. It's over a hundred dollars a quarter, under ten. And, you know, we talked about just the capital program going up ten, fifteen percent a year, not only for the joint meeting but for other related services. That's a hit on our residential customers.
We definitely have to look into that whole street concept, Tony. We tried everything else, right? Can't get on the board because they don't want us there. I don't think the eleven members want the city of Elizabeth on there.
I have nothing to say about that. I'm not, I don't represent any of the cities.
They don't want us there.
Any of the members.
Let me ask you a question, and I don't know if you know the answer off the top of your head. Of the hundred and thirty-seven employees you have.
Yes, sir.
How many live in Elizabeth?
There are a lot that live in Elizabeth.
How many?
I can get that for you.
I'd like to know that.
Well, it's not my head. I don't know.
I'd like to know about a hundred and thirty-seven. Since we're paying thirty-five percent, you should at least get forty percent of those employees, Elizabeth residents, out of the thing. I don't think that's a fair, that's an unfair request.
Well, we don't allocate...
I know you don't, but I'd like to know what that is.
So I can tell you how many.
You know, the next time these apprentices are opened up, I think we should get a notice of it so that we can have our city residents have a shot at it. Plenty of kids graduating high school that need jobs.
And we are looking for those who are interested in working here and learning because the age of...
And they won't have to travel too far because they live right here.
But our concern is that...
Manny Grover.
Man, I'm sorry. Of the trainees that we brought in this year, starting beginning of September, that were Elizabeth residents, and I can also get that from...
I'd like to find out the numbers.
In fact, I sent a letter to your mayor because he recommended someone for a position.
Good. Maybe we need to recommend more. Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Hold on. Yeah, just, I'm sorry.
Just one point of positivity. If in fact the fees are based, both operating, capital are based on flows, we pay the largest bill, but proportionally we're paying what everybody else is paying. However, the big thing here is that all of these other municipalities, in my view, are fairly benefiting from the fact that this facility sits in the city of Elizabeth. Off of our property tax rules, we're providing services and not, not to the detriment of the joint meeting itself, but out of fairness. The other municipalities should be contributing to this host fee so that we at least get compensated for the fact that the facilities here in the city...
Oh, I agree.
Yes, Counselor?
Many years ago, I do remember a lot of your familiar faces. Thank you, Mr. McGee. How much would it cost for the city to be part of this group again if the group would allow the city to be part of it? What kind of estimation? I remember somebody mentioned that.
There was a study done several years ago, and an estimate was made, and I would be very reluctant to even estimate a guess from recollection. It was big.
It was a very, very big...
You're right. I understand what you're saying, but we're paying a lot of money.
But what about...
And we're continuing, the improvements they're making are replacing old stuff that's there.
Right.
And we're paying for it, thirty-five percent of it, above a hundred percent.
Maybe we should ask for federal money to come in and pay for some of these expenses because we get the burden of it in Elizabeth.
Right.
And, or we have, like you suggested, might be gradually the city should be doing sanitary sewer line and water line or whatever.
The feds have to issue a permit though.
And I'm sure with the politicians that we know that would have been involved in here, they should be able to offer that on all the else. And this could be the beginning of something to save money for the future because the way we're going, nobody's going to remain in Elizabeth.
Can I just put a little plug in your ear?
Go ahead.
A number of years ago, this State Department of Transportation drained Route One as it went through the city of Elizabeth without permission of the city and without permission of the joint meeting. But you're paying for that flow.
Right, it's going into our, yeah, it's going into our lives.
Yes, it is. And it's one of the issues that we brought up on this...
But they're state entities, so we can't tax them either.
But we, but see, the way they presented this permit issue to us, what's the engineer's name? I forget your engineer's name.
Dan Loomis?
Loomis.
Dan Loomis and I pointed out to the D E P and the E P A that their own government agencies, their agencies did this, and their jaws dropped. And they backed off, and we gave them the documents dating back twenty years where we proved where the stuff was, where we proved how the connections were made without permission, and they had to do some backpedaling. So I don't know how that's going to be handled.
Well, and listen, that's part of the whole state.
Yes, that's part of it.
If we're going to allow the turnpike and one and nine and all these state roads and county roads, send their stuff, we should start getting some benefit out of it. Counselor, hold on.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to say, I do recall as Professor Mazza indicated that joint meeting, Mr. McGee was here several years ago, since I've been here, Joe, as well. And we touched on the issue of us being able to rejoin or to join the joint meeting. However, when we were given the fee, it was a ridiculous fee, almost charging us back to the point to when the joint meeting was created. And having become a member at that point and paying from eighteen ninety-eight to the present. So it was, it was a...
No, I understand, but the argument I'm making is that they just presented, they just presented to us this chart of all these individuals. So the stuff that was in nineteen eighty-nine eighty-eight has now been replaced. That we're paying for.
Yeah.
So there can't be much value of old stuff there because all the new stuff we've already paid for.
No, they built good stuff back then. Some of it's still around.
Oh, some of it. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
We've got millions of dollars.
And I certainly agree, if we can find some other way to get some benefit out of it, being the largest user and customer with this host fee or something, that would be great. I hope so. It would be a favor of him.
So a couple of things. You're going to...
Yeah, the apprentices of Elizabeth.
Do you want a copy of it? You have a card that I can send to you? I'll take a short recess. Before you do, Mr. McGee wanted to remind everybody at any time that you want to take a tour of the facility, contact his office and we can...
He gave us a beautiful presentation. We looked at it from a legal standpoint.
So you don't have to smell it.
Councilman Sedano, Councilman Gollman.
Here.
Councilman Mazda.
Here.
President Groban.
Here. We're going to, members of council, we're going to put off the one item that was going to go into closed session. We'll do that in two weeks. It's a worker's comp. It's not a rush.
Do you want the envelopes back?
Oh, sure, because they're going to be home... Did I speak out of turn?
Yes.
I opened mine.
Yeah, maybe this way I'll have to put in the package. Letter dated September tenth, two thousand fourteen from His Honorable the Mayor, subject to confirmation of Your Honorable's body. I hereby reappoint the Honorable Richard Oba Elizabeth to serve as Judge of the Municipal Court for another term of three years effective October one, two thousand fourteen.
Hold on.
Yes. Letter dated September twelfth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a contract with Union Square Medical Associates Elizabeth to provide medical services covering fire, police, and city employees for the period September one, two thousand fourteen to August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, at a cost not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars.
Hold on.
Letter dated September twelfth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to renew the public officials bond with the Hartford Insurance Company, Hartford, Connecticut, through agent of record Hughes Palmer Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, covering Paul Lesniak, City Treasurer, Tax Collector for the period of December one, two thousand fourteen to December one, two thousand fifteen, and an annual premium of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Hold on. Tony, where's our list of properties to be auctioned?
It was given. It was given. It was given.
No. What we received, no, what we received was just that South Second Street list.
No, there was a lot of lists.
No, there was a lot of, the list of properties.
There was a property. The week before you had that.
Okay, so let me ask you, when are we going to put it on for auction?
Well, hopefully in the next couple of months. In the next couple of months.
Okay.
Letter dated September twelfth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the purchasing agent to initiate a proprietary sealed bid process to purchase one five-hundred-foot-long section of twelve-inch super aqueduct, single-jacketed polyester and polyurethane hose with couplings manufactured by Angus Flexible Pipelines, a division of Pyrenees Corporation, Ontario, Canada. A five-hundred-foot section of the hose is damaged and needs to be replaced in order to help extinguish petrochemical tank farm fires.
Farm fires.
I don't see where that's at.
A hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
So we're buying fifteen hundred feet.
No, five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
We have fifteen hundred now.
Right.
All right, put it on.
Okay. You got damage in the fire. Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to E Plus Technology Inc., Newtown, Pennsylvania, for computer hardware, printer service, media software upgrades, and other computer equipment for various city buildings for the period September one, two thousand fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Howard Industries, Inc., Ellisville, Mississippi, for hardware for computers, printer service, media, software upgrades, printer repairs, and other computer equipment for various city buildings for the period September one, two thousand fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Hold on.
Okay, letter dated September fourteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Dell Marketing L P, Round Rock, Texas, for the purchase of Dell Computers, servicing replacement parts for Dell Computers for various city buildings for the period September one, two thousand fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Cleveland Auto and Tire Company Elizabeth for tires and tubes for public works, police, and fire department vehicles for the period September tenth, two thousand fourteen through March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Rico U S A, Pine Brook, New Jersey, for payment of cost per copy on existing lease copiers for various departments during the period September one, two thousand fourteen through August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist, recommends the award of a contract to Rana Construction, Inc., North of Jersey, for the immediate demolition of ten sixty-five Magnolia Avenue in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute all necessary documents between the city of Elizabeth and Kane University to provide BlueBus trolley transportation for facilitating bus transportation to and from Kane University for the three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary celebration.
Done October nineteenth.
Letter dated September sixteen, two thousand fourteen from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Endpoint Technology Sales, Inc., Gardenia, California, with the third-party service provider, D R S Imaging, Springfield, New Jersey, for the purchase of cloud-based software as a service in the form of electronic data storage of construction documents at a cost of fifty-one thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars sixty-five cents. Letter dated September sixteen, two thousand fourteen, requesting to amend the resolution... Oh, and it's from the Business Administrator. Requesting to amend the resolution dated September thirteen, two thousand eleven, approving inter-local agreement with the County of Union covering the city of Elizabeth's fiber connection and maintenance, specifically to include the installation of twelve strands of fiber between four seventy-two Catharine Street and Gen Six and one police plaza with a single non-occurring installation charge in the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars with a one thousand dollars a month maintenance charge and to extend, terminate the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Hold on.
Letter dated September fifteen, two thousand fourteen from Robert J. Lenihan, Junior Esquire, Special Counsel, requesting authorization for the mayor to execute the settlement agreement between the city of Elizabeth and Burnet Investors Urban Renewal.
Tony, can you...
Yeah, these steps have already been taken. You're just, excuse me, approving that the mayor executes the written agreement. So we've already done all the steps. You've already put the pilots through and taken all the steps. This is just approving the written agreement. Excuse me? I think this was Bob Lenihan.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So the man did not go to court, correct?
No, it was a settlement.
It's a settlement, so I believe it did go to court, but yeah, but this is a settlement.
Okay.
But it's all the agreements that we already were told was going to happen?
Exactly. We've already taken the actions that are, that we are required under this agreement previously. So you're just allowing the mayor to sign it. That's the same question that I had, but yes, I talked to Bob Lenihan, he said yes.
Really? Even though we already approved the settlement at the last meeting?
Well, no, no, you've taken, you've passed resolutions taking the steps that are necessary under this agreement, this is just to execute the agreement.
No, I'm fine, I don't have a problem with this. It seems a little odd.
I was just as puzzled as you were.
But, okay.
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from Robert J. Lenihan, Esquire, Special Counsel, requesting authorization for the mayor to execute the settlement agreement between the City of Elizabeth and 107 First Street Urban Renewal. Letter dated September 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to credit said property owner's entitled to a senior citizen or disability deduction and a veteran deduction for the 2014 tax year in the amount of $2,000. Letter dated September 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2015 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary. Letter dated September 16, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer, advising that transfers for the 2014 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary. Letter dated September 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2014 Appropriations Act, it requires that Your Honorable Body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits. Letter dated September 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider the approval of a capital ordinance authorizing the cost of sidewalks and drainage improvements at various city properties in a total amount of $400,000.
Hold on a second. Are we, are we under one of these already? Didn't we already put some money aside, because we did, um, Jackson Park, we did, um, Keller Park, is there more parks that have to be done?
Yeah, this includes, I guess, buildings and rights of way, I could get you a list of the contemplated projects.
Thanks.
Give me a copy to the phone agreement.
Letter dated September 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider authorizing the mayor to execute the Midtown Parking Garage operating agreement between the Elizabeth Development Corporation and the Elizabeth Parking Authority to operate the facility, and the Elizabeth Parking Authority to integrate the facility with its other existing parking facilities in the city for the term to commence upon its execution and shall extend to May 14, 2027.
How does this impact us?
Yeah, well, it doesn't affect the city directly. EDC, as you know, built the Midtown Garage years ago, and it was funded through the New Jersey EDA bonds, okay? The contemplation now is to incorporate all the parking facilities under the Elizabeth Parking Authority. We think it would be better served, and also have a better chance of completing the debt service of payments.
Okay, so how does, who's on the hook for the bonds currently?
Well, it's EDA.
No, no, who's responsible to pay them?
I'm sorry, EDC. EDC is on the hook.
And what will happen is, the Parking Authority will be on the hook then?
No, no, so it's gonna be, uh, EDC. Now, they're New Jersey Economic Development Bonds, okay? Now, should they not be paid, if there's a default in any way, the city has a guarantee to make those payments. So the thinking being that if we have a more efficient operation, all umbrellaed under the Parking Authority, we'd have a better chance to avoid any defaults and have a more efficient operating system.
So in essence, Parking Authority money would be used to cover any deficiency injuries?
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping that the more revenue-producing and more efficient services, and that the debt service payments will be paid.
Has it been, has it been, been paid? No problems so far?
Mr. President? Tony, which park does not belong under the Parking Authority?
Uh, that's the one right across from the train station.
Or the one that is over 20 years already?
No, it's not 20 years.
No, no, it was-
Across from, yeah, the monument of the-
Yeah, it's about 20 years.
It's modern.
No, it's not.
And it's already in bad shape, take a look, the condition.
Well, they're having, uh, you'll see further on, they're gonna have UEZ, a grant through the Parking Authority to complete some of those improvements.
But that property was, that parking deck was probably built about 40 years ago.
And it was built on the what, EDC?
EDC.
And now we-
EDC will still be there.
I understand.
But Parking Authority will be responsible for-
Managing.
Managing the revenue, let's put it this way.
Managing the property and services.
Okay, thank you.
Letter dated September 8, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the 2014 transform of your city through innovation application sponsored by Bloomberg, Bloomberg, blah, 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 repeat, in an amount not to exceed $2 million. Okay.
This is going to, some of it will be used to improve our animal shelter seating.
That's what she said.
Okay.
So she's applying for this?
She's applying for it, that means we don't have it.
Right.
Didn't she apply for something before we interviewed?
Yeah.
We applied for a Petco grant, and I don't think it was ever awarded.
Letter dated September 10, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting to enter into an agreement between the City of Elizabeth Department of Health and Human Services and the Elizabeth Board of Education for five per payment of the nursing services to non-public schools for the period September 1, 2014, through June 30, 15, to receive Letter dated-
Copy of the, um, the resolution, the copy of the last year's resolution is attached with the document. Did I go to the other one?
No, I don't have that.
And do we know the seven non-public schools? Right, EDC also, and New Jersey Station tonight. Can we get that resolution to everyone?
Letter dated September 12, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to utilize urban enterprise zones on assistance funds for capital improvement and modernization project at the Midtown Parking Garage in the amount of $969,900.
Neil, your answer, Councilman?
I know, thank you.
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated November 12, 2013, with the Urban League of Union County Elizabeth, to provide direct assistance for homelessness prevention for up to 48 families in the amount of $40,822.20, specifically to extend the contract term to December 31, 2014.
Have we had to extend this in the past already?
I don't really remember.
We find out-
For this particular one?
For this one specifically.
Okay.
This says here that they've been slow requesting reimbursement, so due to volume of clients, they're only doing 48, right? Do their job, give them their money.
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to confidentially contact for the purposes of selecting a licensed and qualified firm to provide for the administration of records related to foreclosed and vacant properties within the city limits.
Cost in CMA? Mr. President? Yeah, Councilman?
Mr. President, I was going to bring up, during the runaround, since this is related to the same topic, there was a law passed in August relating to abandoned properties, and I just want to make sure they took a look at it, to make sure that we're in compliance with that law, if anything that we need to change or add to our own ordinance. Now, particularly just wanted to see, it's about the upkeep of the properties in that, but also this requires out-of-state predators in particular to designate an estate person or entity to take care of the property, I don't know if we have that language in our-
We do.
We do? Okay, great, then, fine.
So, I don't understand, we're gonna put out a bid to hire administrators, is that what this is?
I'm not sure what this resolution is, I was just answering the question of-
No, I know, but can you, can you-
Yeah, I think it's basically keep a track of all the different foreclosed properties in Elizabeth.
Do you not have anyone in-house to do that?
That's my point.
Yeah.
Right.
The volume is huge, and it was the opinion of the Director of the Planning, that an outside consultant to track this would be more efficient.
There's no price here, so-
No.
Can we hold this until we find out how much he's- I mean, people need jobs, I mean, we could hire two people probably for the price of what we're gonna hire this firm to do this job.
Mr. President, there's no guarantee that this price won't be exorbitant, number one. Number two, that an outside firm will do any better job than our own employees.
Local person who knows the streets and knows-
Our staff members. And number three, City Hall would retain greater control over the, over the process, so it seems like, I'm not, I'm just saying, I think that you're taking the right step here, but put a hold on this if you get more information.
Yeah.
She didn't realize, she didn't understand.
Mr. President, he indicates over 2,000 properties that is difficult to maintain, but, yeah, I think we need to work on that a little bit.
I can't see how-
It's called work. When people come in and work. Take your time.
Just, if we can just find out how much he's planning on spending with this outside consultant, and, I just don't see how we can't have people in City Hall, either ones that we have now, or hire people to do this, I-
Yeah, to keep them track of all of these properties, and also later on in the letter, you'll see that they also will be responsible for collecting registration fees, which could be a huge dollar amount, so, what, I just said, there's a cost benefit outside versus the other.
In our, in our ordinance, we do charge, I think, a fee for, for these banks to register their foreclosed property, whatever, is that correct? I just think we have-
You're not sent, you're not allowed?
It currently is.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna hold this up.
Letter dated September 10, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services on a time and material basis for actual time and expenses in connection with the demolition of 823 East Jersey Street former water utility garage at a cost not to exceed $90,905 plus reversible.
Mr. President? Why are we doing all this work if we have to put it for sale? Whoever buys it will do whatever that-
I've had the same argument, and I don't agree with us spending any money on something that we're gonna put on an auction, and we may never get this money.
Why don't you, we just-
Can we find out why we need to do this?
I mean, personally, as the word council, I'm completely against wasting taxpayers' money for whatever reason that we don't have yet, maybe somebody has somebody else's closet preserved, but it's definitely unacceptable.
Okay, so for the three items? Is Jersey Street, First Street?
No, no, 823.
Well, you have two ways to add to it.
The Mac Building- Yeah, the Mac Building has nothing to do with it. This issue that the Councilman's raising is a valid point, because I know that that property is being admired by a lot of people at 823 East Jersey, and I think that if we put it up for auction tomorrow, we're gonna get a good number for it.
Absolutely.
And there's no reason for us to be spending, and those that want this property out there could care less what's hot.
That's right, and the structure's sound.
My, my question is, can the, can the deed be couched in such a way, if one of this property goes up for auction, that it shall be the buyer's responsibility to do whatever
Okay, now which specific property again are we talking about?
823 East Jersey.
823, right.
But that's the one that's gonna be auctioned off.
Right.
It's on the thing.
The other two are city properties.
Right.
Yeah, 823 East Jersey, you know, it's like, why are we getting them?
That's the only one, Tony. The other two are city properties that were not an election off, so the one that he can build whatever he wants. The one for, 155 First Street, and the one for 625 Pulaski Street will be put on. Yes, I don't have a problem with that, I'm happy to see, Mr. President, that we're moving forward, we're getting the engineering services so we can do the demolition.
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting contract amendment number one final to the resolution dated May 13, 2014, authorizing a contract to T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with environmental consulting engineering services at Veterans Memorial Waterfront Park at a cost not to exceed $108,530, specifically to provide environmental consulting engineer services at an additional cost not to exceed $9,500, raising the amount of the contract to $118,050.
90% paid by the FIA. We'll hold that argument for another day. I know, you're gonna do that.
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting contract amendment number one final to the resolution dated January 28, 2014, authorizing a contract to T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the environmental consulting engineering services at Veterans Memorial Waterfront Park at a cost not to exceed $98,350, specifically to provide environmental consulting engineering services at an additional cost not to exceed $12,190, raising the amount of the contract to $110,540.
But didn't they know they needed environmental consulting engineering services?
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand. Can we get an explanation, Tony? What exactly are they're talking about? This, the second increase is needed because the as-built quantity of impacted material loaded and transported for off-site disposal exceeded the original 247 tons, which is why there's an increase. But 247 tons was based on T&amp;M's proposal? So it was their own proposal, so, and I'm trying to say, now, so did they mess up?
Understand circumstances, they had to do additional, so-
They math?
Well, they estimated 500 tons.
Right.
And it wound up being 747 tons.
But it was them that calculated.
Yeah, but it's on the estimation.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation's local aid application for the Transit Billy Grant Program, Grant, to implement a new traffic light system at the intersection of Morris Avenue and Westfield Avenue not to exceed $600,000.
We're getting grant money for that, right?
Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation's application for the Bikeway Grant Program, Grant, to expand upon the Elizabeth River Trail Project by implementing Phase Four of the initiative along the Elizabeth River from South Broad Street to West Grand Street not to exceed $1,700,000. Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation's application for the municipal aid program Grant to implement a new traffic light system on Elizabeth Avenue at the intersection of Elizabeth Avenue, South Street, and Jake Street not to exceed $600,000. Letter dated September 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation's application for the Safe Streets to Transit Program Grant to implement a new traffic light system at the intersection of Broad Street and East-West Grand Street not to exceed $600,000. Letter dated September 16, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to request the New Jersey Department of Transportation to perform traffic signal upgrades at Elmore Avenue with Edgar Road, Elmore Avenue with Broadway Avenue, left turn phasing and signal display upgrades, with the city assuming 25% of the total cost to revise the devices.
Mr. President, this is what I was talking about at our last conference, these two intersections, and working with the Director, the Director as well as our Chief Financial Officer, who came up with this, was the best way to...
So we're only gonna put, we're only paying 25%?
25%, yeah.
Well, yeah, the absolute dollar amounts aren't known yet.
So we just don't know what that is, but whatever.
Whatever it is, it's 25%.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated September 4, 2014, from GeoWorks Consulting LLC, Clinton, New Jersey, requesting site access to the Cupniki Playground located at 128-142 Fulton Street to determine if there are any contaminants of concern that might have migrated onto public property. Recommendation with the engineer.
That's a question I have. They're gonna do five to seven soil borings in the grassy area and the basketball court. Oh, yeah, can we... We wanna see if they will repair any damage that they did to the playground. Basketball courts. Because we had just repaid that basketball court. The minute you start, you know how blacktop is, the minute you make a hole in it, moisture gets in.
Handicap parking at 144 South Park Street by Councilman Torres, also 150 South Park Street. We have an invitation for Sunday, October 12, 2014, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. for the Columbus Room.
Usually I have to use the miches.
Yeah, miches.
And Councilwoman would like to put on commendation for Onofrio Vitulow as Unico's 2014 analyst of the year, also the Elizabeth Coalition to house the homeless will be presenting the Third Annual Great Elizabeth Area Transportation Justice and Distribution Industry Recognition Practice.
What is that?
Yeah, everyone's gonna have a, excuse me, one meeting. Everyone should have it in their...
You threw it.
You threw it out.
I didn't know what it was.
You have to read it.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't telephone.
Yeah, I have another one. For the Coalition, the Elizabeth Coalition, the House of Homeless, they have in their annual breakfast on Thursday, October 2nd, that are like those who can attend to attend until 8:00 a.m. Everyone should have it in their package.
Yeah, it's in there. Also, the engineer is requesting to remove from the table the Henry Street vacation. That was tabled. All the move, Keenan's seconded, and Councilwoman...
Initiate, protect, what do you want to do there?
They wanna remove from the table.
Remove it from the table to be considered, the Henry Street vacation.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Councilman Maza has two memorials, one for Santa Coletti and Eva Torres. Okay, it's been requested to remove from home and to vacate a portion of Brighton, Brighton Street.
So that's where they're planning to go to school or Pulaski?
Oh, yeah.
We asked to send a letter to the legislators to see what they could do.
So do we, so do we, so do we not put it down?
Even though, even though, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't matter whether we vacate or not, they're moving forward, but...
They want to even bother with that, because they're gonna do a misfortune.
So the state can do whatever they want?
They should just send an advice.
I understand, but...
You understand?
What do you want to do, Councilman, forward? It's your call, I'll still keep it on the table.
Yeah, I'll keep it on, right? I mean, they, if they have that posture, they should just send an advice.
I wanna do, but I have to, the letter, the letter going out to legislators about the problem that we're having with that school, and the school across the street, and whatever they can do, the school development authority, to ensure that we get parking.
Mr. President, just to answer to the second word coming, plenty of parking around the front of the whole front of the schools.
Never enough parking, Councilman.
Yeah. There would be, look at the draw.
Do we have a copy of the drawing?
No.
Okay, well, you saw something we don't have.
I asked that question, there is a draw that you could...
Where's the draw on it now?
Whatever, the mature building or the state, whatever.
Well, let's write a letter to them to send Councilman Nelson Gonzalez a copy of the drawing.
Well, all I know is the residents, I brought it up on my last meeting over there in Baywatch, and they all concerned that it's a problem now when school is coming in, when school is letting out, with parking, with the residents, with the buses and all that, and that this is just gonna make it worse. That's the complaint that I'm getting, and I'm just voicing the concern of the residents that live in that area, not those that just come to drop off their kids over work.
So get us that, if we can get that plan so good, they will... I'll leave it off. All right, keep it on hold? All right, keep it on me. All right, a couple things that I wanted to bring up. And that was it, right, Bill? Okay, a couple things I wanna bring up.
Mr. President, normally you press me first, right?
No, but I go first.
I'm not saying normally.
All right. It's been brought to my attention that we are having a problem over at the airport with what they call, I guess, scavenger pickups, which are taxi owners and companies that do not have licenses, delivery licenses or, I mean, valiant out of the city of Elizabeth. Now, I was looking through our city ordinance that controls this, and the, what I'd like to have, maybe, George, if you bring this back to the law department, there are penalties in here, monetary penalties. What I'd like to see is, can we seize their vehicle as part of the penalty? Because what's happening is, it's now not just one, it's three or four different companies who just basically have ignored anything to do with taxi license. So what's happening is, they get a summons, the company pays the gentleman's summons, which is a couple hundred bucks, dollars, and they just, it's a cost of doing business. So I think to put a little more teeth into this thing, if we can do it, maybe we seize their car, have the commentators tell... Because then it becomes a little more...
There's another wrinkle to this. Last time I came in back from the airport, somebody approached me as I was coming out of the gate, saying, "Do you need a ride?" So in addition to where they may be on the street, they're also intercepting passengers as they come out of the...
They're scavengers.
Yeah, but the point is that if you had somebody circling, I don't know how you'd deal with that, in other words...
The problem is that there's not enough, when I say Port Authority, police officers to just, I mean, they got other things to do. But I think if there's a message sent, we start confiscating one, two, three cars, maybe...
That's a problem.
Problem, yeah?
Yeah.
So if you can look into that and see if that's something we could put into this ordinance. Here's the, I think, challenge of five points. The Elizabeth Ford Parents Support Group is having a kick, "Give for a Cause" at O'Brien Soccer Field on September 20, which is Friday, no, Saturday, I'm sorry, at 3:30, anybody at home wants to come and support their efforts, feel free to do so, doesn't have a person. We talked about October 2nd, the Coalition, Elizabeth Coalition, and I wanna add on to the list Joe Pecaro for accommodation, he is retiring as principal of St. Patrick's, well, now it's called a Patrick, it used to be St. Patrick's. That's all I got, Councilwoman New York.
Okay, I just, I need a four-way stop sign on Sires and McGee Avenue. What's wrong? I know, I'm not a ward person.
Now, we've done this before, we've turned down...
But now, I see everyone else is giving them, so...
Now, but, with all due respect...
Of course, I respect.
This was one of the first, this is one of the first issues that came to me when I came on council, we vetted the whole thing, we did a traffic study, there was not enough accidents there.
Yes, it is, the people running over the side...
When was this done, Joe?
About three, four years ago.
Maybe they do a new study, maybe, maybe things have changed.
Can we just put it up, because the people are running over the side, the horse guard there, he almost gets hit every day, because I, you know, I...
Mr. President?
It's right around the corner from where I live. This is on my first one, my rack, can I finish?
Let, let it...
So we can try to get that up, because at the block watching meeting on Sires, the residents, they're afraid the sun's starting to get hit, the horse guard, he has a cane, and literally he has to put his cane out to get to stop the cars, it's just a real bad intersection. So I know Councilman Keenan has tried, so I'm a component, can't, you know, try, try to get it to succeed, so, let's try one more time, okay, Councilman? Thank you.
Any else?
Yeah, I have one other thing. Can I have a memorial for Gertrude Maria Hollinshead Johnson?
Maria?
Maria.
Mir, Maria.
She's the oldest of the Hollinshead family here in the city of Elizabeth, I think it's like 42,000.
Can I skip this one?
I think that's, that's my thing, she's the oldest of them. The services is gonna be on Friday, I'll let colleagues know those who don't want it.
Any else?
No, no, sorry.
Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, can we send a letter to the technicians to see exactly when the cameras are gonna be put up at the waterfront soccer field? I know the field was built before I got here, but there's several things that was going on down there, and I believe that the kids use that place as a safe haven, you know, and I think we need to...
Increase the security.
Absolutely. And last...
Can I piggyback on that?
Go ahead.
Can we also, that, that letter's gonna go, I guess, over to the police director? You also asked the police director that, as part of their patrol duties, the district car come into that parking lot, make a turnaround and come out once in a while, so that there's some presence of, hey, get out of their car if they don't got a call for service, and just show a presence there? Because I think that might go a long way too, right? That counts, not?
Absolutely, and I know last year when I came out to the county, I requested a three-way stop sign on Front Street, Front to Court, Front to Magnolia, it's high volume with kids running in and out of soccer practice and football practice, and last week, my, two weeks ago, my worst fears came true, a six-year-old kid got hit by a car. So now we have to put up barricades, but I would like a traffic study team to come there again, approximately around 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon, that's...
Oh, it's crazy.
Yeah, it's very crazy down there.
It's those four, three or four streets that are coming right for us. It's Magnolia, Bond, Court, no.
It's a Front and Bond, Front Magnolia and Front and Court, just entering the...
It's a one-block stretch. I got out of there today at 5:30, I was freaking...
Maybe you need to put up those children at play or caution, because...
They did.
And we put up the speed... Councilman Keenan, go ahead.
Councilwoman, with all due respect, I'm the third Ward Council member till December 31st of this year, I would respectfully ask that if you have an issue related to the third Ward, that you call me, you got my, you got my phone number, and I'd be happy to talk about an issue to bring to the council. If you're a Ward Council person, you would not find it acceptable for that part of the council person to bring such a matter before council, and I'm sure my other colleagues, Ward colleagues, would not appreciate that, would you? So if we can agree to that, Councilman, I appreciate those remarks.
No, I'm not gonna agree to that, because number one, I attend those block watching meetings every month with those residents on McGee Avenue, which you have not been there for the last two years, respectfully, I live around the corner, they email me, they call me, I was not trying to usurp your authority as a Ward Council person, but if you make yourself available to your residents, perhaps I will might have to bring this issue up.
Councilman, I respectfully request that you bring third Ward issues to me before you bring them up here, thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Councilman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple items, Mr. President, on the corner of Bond and, and the street, I'd like to request a traffic study, see if we can include it before we stop at that intersection.
Where's that?
On Bond and, and Henry. And also lies on the corner of Henry and Anna, same thing. Also, in our ordinance for commercial vehicles, not so where they can be on the street, up until night of Clark in the evening, but I'm concerned, my concern with...
Well, they're not supposed to be, no, that's not correct.
They need to be on the street up until night p.m.
If it's a four-ton street, you can't be on that street at all.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Unless you're making a delivery.
That's, that's correct, but I'm gonna talk about parking for commercial vehicle after, not for the...
Not a heavy truck, okay?
I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about the parking.
Like the, the commercial vans and stuff like that?
I'm concerned about whether commercial vehicle, whether, whatever commercial, that's what I'm concerned about, up until night p.m. So what I don't know was if it's in the ordinance, if someone could pull at it and tell me. For tow trucks, I'm getting a large volume of tow trucks in, in certain areas, which is, is commercial vehicle, don't know if that applies to them, if it does not apply to them, I'd like to see if we can incorporate that it does apply to them. I've had several...
I would have to believe it does, but if it doesn't, then we'll clarify.
Well, I wanted to apply to them, because I got several complaints about, you know, that the guys, I can say in their, I don't know what they are, they have commercial tow truck, flatbed and regular tow trucks, that they're commercial vehicles, and parking in the resident area...
Overnight.
Overnight, because I, I am sick and tired, I've been sick and tired of that happening, I'm not gonna stand for it, not in a fifth Ward basis, and also, I'm cracking down on tractor trailers that have been parked in my, in my, I'm not, I'm not standing for that, gotta stop. So I'd like to find out, but, but, I'm okay with the tractor trailer taking care of that, but my concern right now is the flatbed tow truck and the regular tow truck.
We'll look into it.
Commercial, because they say, like, I hate to repeat myself, if it's not included in, I wanna make sure that we include it. Because the other issue, I'll pass it on, but you can let me know the information, I'd like to also add to the, to the public work directive, that I would like to see all the fire hydrant, interfere with, the fire hydrant painted yellow, I want to paint those, I think it's 10 feet wherever they are, especially, I'd like to start on Anna Street... Specials, I'd like to start on Anna Street, Bond Street, uh, in that area, Henry, well, I want all done, but I want to start that particular area first, Bond, yeah, Bond, Henry, Anna, Flora, Olive, and also Magnolia, that stretch through there, right? If we start that, then we can just branch out other places.
Okay.
Okay.
Any else, Councilman?
That's it, thank you.
Councilman Metz?
Mr. President, I do agree with the fifth ward, council pretending to commercial truck overnight, not only in this ward, but even my ward, I see many of them, especially even diesel engine trucks, whatever they are, you know, either they park in the six-footers someplace else, and then maybe they come and see their girlfriends around with the diesel, whatever. So, uh, I think we have to give out tickets, enforce the law, if you don't mind, send a letter to our director, especially, you know, commercials, as long as they're commercial, I mean, uh, they want to be a contractor, they have to have a commercial plate, as simple as that, otherwise, what sense in doing that?
It's not Carlos Chupin on the side of the...
I can't read too far away, Council, so I got to watch. Anyway, uh, Mr. President, last week or two weeks ago, you asked my good friend, Tony, not anything personal towards you, but you asking about the, there was supposed to be no tax increase, the border education went 0%, the city went 0%. And Tony, you mentioned a little bit about the, uh, from the county, you know, not a lot. I would like to know the, the rate, the current rate and the rate change, because, uh, on page, last year you had 133,155,130 versus at the bottom, maybe now with all those things that are supposed to be, I'll show you the page. It's about an $8 million increase, you know, met, as you mentioned to the people from, uh, number two and two is four, so met is met. And, uh, Tony, you might have an answer on which you could give it to me anytime you would like to, because I voted by taking the president's words and your word, there was no tax increase in the city. I don't know whether it's true, but the figure that I just saw on this page, $8 million increase, you know, you're increasing $8 million...
Revenue, right, that's an increase in revenue, Tony?
I think he's talking about the amount to be...
Is necessarily going to tax go up where you come from?
Well, a surplus or...
You also, you don't have it, you might have it, pending on a new construction, on this page, Tony, I could live with the ability to look at it and explain, because I, I was really, I voted in favor because I was so happy to see, hallelujah, no increase. But the current rate, can you tell me which one is the current rate, or can you email me, I mean, last year, what was the counter rate? Now, what is the, the new rate that you have, so I would like to see exactly from the rate that I was paying last year on my tax bill versus this rate that you have, whether you have a zero increase on the municipal budget, I don't think you have a zero increase, whether you have any, you have to raise $8 million from the taxpayers. And we all voted because he asked that question and he made it clear, right, is that correct, Mr. President? That's it, so whenever you could give me the answer, I would love to...
I could give you, uh, an answer.
You know, because I don't want to be, uh...
Yeah, Tony, give us an answer.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, the comparison is based on your last quarterly bill, which would have been in May, versus the bill that you got in August, for the average home assessed around $33,000, the increase was maybe $5, $10, something like that, which is basically to be no tax increase. That number for the August, November is going to be the same for February and May. I mean, that's the, uh, the basis for saying there is no, what, tax increase based on the, the May billing versus the next four billings.
But do you have the current tax rate that you would be, let's say, after we voting on the, why the magic date is November 12?
They only give you a tax rate in, uh, June, when we go through the estimated, uh, bill of the county within the tax rate, but that's the estimated rate, the actual rate doesn't come through, and it's not published by the county for February and May. Uh, the actual rate will be imposed after the budget's adopted, and if the budget stays the same as now...
So right now, we assuming that there is no tax increase from our part?
Well, if the budget stays the same, unless there's some budget change.
Or $8 million more, can it stay the same?
No, we got offsets by, uh, surplus, so in other words, we have more surplus to cover the, uh, the expenses going forward for next year.
Yeah, but right...
The proof is all in your tax bill.
Okay.
So that's what you have to, to go on and...
So the explanation is, although the income is gone up, that income is coming from another source other than tax bills? That's the answer?
Well, I'm, I'm sure you're going to have a new revenue for new construction that was built in the city of Elizabeth.
So surplus, he just said they're, they're using last, some surplus from last year.
Surplus from last year?
Yeah, which we use every, just keeps rolling over for whatever surplus you have.
And that it's equal to $8 million, that surplus?
Yeah, the proof's going to be in the tax bills that you have, but if you look at your tax bill for April, November, compare it to last, uh, February and May...
You're talking about peanuts increase?
Yeah, yeah, for a $33,000 CEST home...
Right.
I think it might be $5, $70, something like that, and that should continue for February and May, unless it's, if the budget's adopted, as is.
By the county?
Well, by, as I said, by, by council, right? Yeah, the county's increases ready to go in there, and that's...
Well, again, I, uh, I voted in favor, even though I did my word and renewed...
First of all, let me, let me just clarify, you didn't vote for the budget, you voted for its introduction.
Introduction, and then the final vote will be November, right, November 12.
Correct.
But even the introduction, if, if, if this figure of $8 million more is not really the true figure that exists on this page, then, you know...
No, it's a tax bill, like, Council, not, that, the, uh, number, that doesn't count for the tax. It's, other factors that go into it, maybe...
So this number will be rescinded, will be changed by November 12?
No, no, I'm going to say...
Will be the same?
Yeah, the tax bill's going to be, uh, basically the same for, uh, August, November, and the next step of, uh, uh, next year.
Until July, let's say.
Yeah, yeah, so, well...
July, we know.
And then, that's another year.
That's another year.
The surplus that comes through, and if we have any more, uh, exceptional collections, we had a terrific collection rate this year, almost 97%, we had some other one-shot deals from miscellaneous revenues, that type of thing, so... So we're, we're doing good and, uh...
Have you any idea what the property auctions are going to generate in that?
No.
As that, as it has an estimation to be put into this budget?
No.
No.
No, that's going to be miscellaneous revenue, you can't, the budget's on the cash type of basis, so, in other words, you have to have the same revenues, you can't go, uh, higher than the revenues that you had the, uh, the previous years. And, uh, for four properties sold, we don't forecast the budget because it's not cash in hand, so...
But if it happens...
And that'll be entered.
But if it happens in January...
Right.
That would basically go into a surplus.
Surplus account, that'll roll over there, that'll be a bonus.
That could help, next to your budget.
Absolutely.
But you could only use so much, if you have a revenue coming in, a surplus revenue on the sale, you cannot, I don't think you could use all of that, you have to use a percentage of that for the following year, is that correct?
No, it all depends.
All depends?
Yeah, we usually keep a balance, uh, four or five million dollars in the surplus, uh, you know, each year depends on itself, how close the budget is, and it depends on city councils' wishes, if there's a tax increase or no tax increase.
And the surplus that will be forthcoming from the water, that, the water that we were talking about not too long ago?
No, that's a separate unit, that's the sewer utility.
Okay.
That's a separate, uh, unit, separate calendar, separate fund.
I, I, Mr. President, I'm finished.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Thanks, thank you. Mr. President, uh, I think as we discussed at the, on our last meeting, due to the problems that some of the residents are facing because of the discontinuance of busing of some of our students, continue to get calls about crossing guards, I'd like to see if traffic can take a look at the corner of, uh, Elmore and Broadway Avenue, I'm getting requests for crossing guards there, as well as over on Myrtle in the Bayway area, a number of parents are having to cross over the highway, and those that are coming down Myrtle Street, they're now have to find themselves going over to the other side of the Bayway circle they have to cross, so there is a crossing over at, at the Highway 109 and Myrtle Street, so they're asking maybe if to look at, one can be placed there as well. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Have a good night, push.
Good night.